One nation under God, in this school with liberty and justice for all. All right, coordinators, we have the agenda in front of you. Is there motion to approve the agenda as it is written?
I'm just going to approve the agenda.
Okay, motion by them, second by us. All those favor say aye. Aye, if any opposed. Action carries. Okay, so first down our agenda tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Sandy for the student's application.
And this is a pretty extraordinary. Judy, let's explain a little bit more. I'll have to raise that microphone.
Oh, not that, Mr. Microphone. So, yeah, my husband and I ended up getting these awards because we started a German program at the American Institute back in 1993. And the interesting thing was that as we were raising our son, they kept creating things, family groups and things that organization forward by the children. And, and.
Getting ideas and, and anyway, they, they started the honorary council, told the council general in Chicago, who then passed it along and the wheels turned slowly, but who cares? Eventually, we were surprised at a banquet in, in 2008 and we were awarded this and it's pretty cool. So, passion is important and also if you see something that you think is necessary, it might be that other people agree. And so, hopefully, we can continue this kind of thing in Hudson School District with languages and multilingualism. Just wanted to throw that in.
You can see that Judy kind of lives and breathes our HSD 2025 global literacy, both in the classroom and in her personal life. She just really truly walks and talks that belief throughout her life.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Judy, and thank you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mary for the superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. First, I'll start with the enrollment in the second Friday in January. This is our official enrollment and the worksheet that you have in your information is used for the Department of Public Instruction reporting requirements for our state aid. So, as we look at that, and if you just, the green bars are the numbers as our enrollment came in, in September, in the third Friday in September. And then in the white bars, you'll see the enrollment numbers for January 14th, which was the second Friday in January. And you're just looking across, there are changes here and there, but essentially our enrollment across all areas is stable. And you just go down to the final numbers for the September, we're 5,524 in our count. And then in January, it was 5,530. So, that was a gain of six, but that's a count. And if I was looking at just our resident students in EC through grade 12, that analysis is very similar. Essentially, from EC through 12, we've grown by two students. So, again, it's very stable. Our biggest growth in one place was at Rivercrest in the early childhood classes. And that's kind of normal at this time. Students can, can go into that program when they turn three and they turn that all, all through the year. So, stable, some up, some down, but nothing significant at any level. The one I would just point out to you, not a big increase, but with that very large kindergarten class we have in the fall, it was 459 students. And it's still growing at 462 students, again, the largest kindergarten class that we've ever had in the Hudson School District. So, certainly notable and, and a concern for us as it works through the system and we have the classes and sections to serve those students and the space for that. So, any questions that you have or comments? All right, then I'll move on to our kindergarten registration. You'll see in this chart, the kindergarten, three years, and then for two years, the third Friday count and how those compare. So, our registration fortunately this February, in fact, February 1st, was not as high as it was last February. And that's a good thing since I just talked about that very, very, very large kindergarten class that it represents. It's, it's very close to the March 2009 registration. And you'll see fluctuations almost at every school. And that's one thing that we have fluctuations and we've talked about that from grade level to grade level and then school to school. It's not always where we have the seats that we, we have the students coming, but there's significant fluctuation. If we would look at this in relationship from March 2009 to September 2009, February 10, 2010 to September 2010, you'd see about an increase of approximately 50 students from the registration to the actual fall, third Friday. So, if we would take our registration February 1st, 353 students, and we'd add 50, we would be about 400 students we'd expect in the fall. We have the same kind of historical pattern that we've had in the past. So, again, we expect growth in this number. It's just really the preliminary number that we have and Nancy will be working with that as we move forward and monitoring the sections that we have at every school with the principals throughout the spring and then into the summer and making adjustments if we need to.
Thanks, Mary.
Moving along. All right, 612 space for learning update. You remember at the last board meeting that the board directed the administration to look for property of at least 60 acres, preferably in the city of Hudson for future development as a secondary school site. And when I talk about a secondary, secondary, that word means grades six through 12. It isn't just a high school, it's grades six through 12 because we have an overcrowding issue at both the middle school currently and then it will move into the high school. We are currently in the process of looking for a school site and we're hopeful at the present time. I am unable to share any details now because of the potential of compromising our ability to negotiate on any specific parcel. So, that will come in the future. We hope to bring an offer to purchase to the board for consideration in the future. And then we would anticipate, if we're, if we are able to do that, a referendum for a specific school site. So, a referendum specifically about purchase of a piece of property. Once that referendum is decided by the voters, we would plan to move forward with consideration of potential options as a long-term solution for secondary space. And again, it's 612 space. We would anticipate a very significant community engagement process with a lot of feedback from our community about those options and what should be included in that space. The Facilities and Grounds Committee last night authorized us to move forward with an RFP, request for proposal, to identify a consultant firm to coordinate facility assessment, the high school site and the facility at the middle school in Hudson Prairie, to support the secondary space for learning decision-making process with information and then to do cost analysis and feasibility of potential options along with pre-referendum informational support. So, if we look at, you know, the space for learning that I just talked about, we also need to consider the educational programming that would go in that space. And the board has committed over and over again, continuing to commit to the middle school concept and philosophy and moving that forward. And we're in the process, as you know, in the second year of looking at high school learning for the future. And that work is going on. There are four teams that are moving that forward and we'll bring a recommendation to you in probably May or June. The teams are comprised of teachers, administrators, parents, students and business community members. So, that work will be very important for us as we look at additional space for learning and the program that goes inside that space. Considering that we're able to acquire a site for additional space for learning and continued support of the middle school concept and then anticipating some changes to the 912 educational programming, the earliest possible date for a referendum for a long-term secondary space for learning solution seems to be in the general election in November 2012. So, that would be the first time that we would be able to work through all the pieces of that process to bring a referendum to our community for a long-term solution. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or Tim could help me out.
Questions? Okay, I, I do have one, Mary, which is just, we, you shared a lot of information about where we're at in the process that we're going through, but we haven't yet determined that process that we will use to engage the community once we get to that part. That is something that you'll bring to the board and we'll have conversation about what that process will look like at some point in the future, yes?
Absolutely. All right, moving on, our middle school short-term space for learning development process. Knowing that the middle school is over capacity now and will continue to have enrollment growth as we look at our projections and can anticipate those elementary students that we have in our schools moving through our system, it's going to take quite a while for a long-term solution and additional space to be available at the middle school. And as a result of that, we need to once again look at a short-term plan. You know, we've had short-term plans up to this point, but we need to again consider a new plan. And right now, I'm just talking about a conceptual plan and getting your endorsement for that. We presented that to the Facilities and Grounds Committee last night and they endorsed this concept. And since the students that are going to be moving through the middle school are really an elementary school, we're looking at creating a committee or developing a committee with your endorsement that is probably about half parents from students in grades three through five. Some of those we would hope would also have middle schoolers or have had middle schoolers. And then we would also include middle school teachers and administrators on this committee. And the charge of the committee would be twofold. One would be to research and to recommend a short-term space for learning plan for the middle school. And secondly, to recommend when that plan should be implemented, given the information about enrollments. And again, I just look for endorsement from the board so that we can move forward with the details of creating that committee.
Madam Chair, one of the things that we talked about last night and that I wanted to clarify is that we would like to see representation from all of our elementaries in all of our schools so that there is parent representation and they're able to go back to their schools and talk to their school communities about what is going on in the process that we're going to be going through.
Any other questions? Endorsement? All right. You have your endorsement, Mary.
Great. And then lastly, I would like to invite you to the middle school addition open house. And I just want to clarify that the addition that has just been added and opened to the middle school is not a long-term solution for our enrollment issues, other than it is additional common area space. It is additional space that we didn't have, like an orchestra room for the new program that has expanded into the middle school. And so, this space is long-term space for us, very important space as we move forward and it will serve the middle school for years into the future. But it is not space that really addresses the enrollment growth that we're going to have. It'll help support it, but not address it. So, with that in mind, I'd like to invite you to an open house on this space. And that is Thursday, February 24th, from four to eight. It's during, it, it is being held during parent conferences. So, the parents have the opportunity to tour the space as well. And we're very fortunate that student council representatives will be there helping out and helping people tour the space. And we've, the Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce will be holding a ribbon cutting that same day during lunch so that students can be involved in the ribbon cutting itself. So, we're really excited about sharing this space with our community and I know there's a report about that this evening.
All right, thanks, Mary, and I look forward to seeing the new space at the middle. We are moving into the reports section of the agenda and the first item in that section is future trends for careers and preparations. It's Sandy and I think Melissa Hansen is going to join her.
Good evening. Melissa Hansen and I have been going through lots of information regarding careers and jobs, occupation trends in Minnesota and Wisconsin, the United States. And we're here tonight to share some of those findings. It'll impact kind of the direction and some of the, the things that we want to do with students as far as making decisions post-secondary. If we go to the first slide, we bring up our HSD 2025 vision. And I put this in mainly to just let you look at that first line because our opening statement is preparing each student for post-secondary success. And that's really what we're focusing in on tonight is what are we doing for all students? How are we creating a system for all of our students? Now, when we hear that word post-secondary, and Diane, if we go to the next one, please. Our definition in the district is looking at either a four-year degree through the university system, a two-year degree through our community colleges and/or our technical colleges. So, be it university, community or technical, that's all post-secondary. So, tonight, when you hear that phrase or see it in some of our slides, just kind of get that in mind as far as that is the concept that we're dealing with so that we're looking at a broader definition than maybe we've had in the past. Next slide. I'm just going to let you read this for a moment, please. So, even as we're dealing with a recession and thinking there's some high unemployment, what they're looking at for trends and the jobs and retirements and so on that are going to be occurring throughout the United States, there are going to be plenty of jobs open for those who have post-secondary. So, even though this quote, again, says the word college, they're talking about any kind of post-secondary work, those are the kind of positions that will be available for our students. When we talk about preparing all students, most of us were, or maybe I'm dating myself, but many of us were perhaps part of a generation where we were kind of encouraged, strongly encouraged to go to college. You needed to go to college and that was sort of our way to have security and high wages. That was the only path for us. But when we look at the data now, we need to really kind of broaden our thinking because when we're looking now at where the jobs are, there are plenty of high-paying jobs that do come out of a technical college and/or a two-year associate degree. So, tonight, hopefully, you're going to see the world has changed from when many of us were making those decisions. And the information that we're going to share with you tonight will show you that we need to make sure that we broaden opportunities for our students to ensure that they all have a pathway to a successful career. And hopefully, you'll also see as well that it includes setting higher expectations for all of our students.
To be a little bit more specific, if we look at this slide, there are just some facts here that we'd like to share with you. By 2018, 63% of all American job openings will require some sort of post-secondary education. Half of those jobs created in the neck, or in the next decade will be matched with an associate's degree or some sort of technical training. A third of the fastest-growing occupations will require a technical education degree or diploma. And finally, one-third of the jobs created in the coming years are expected to, to have or need a bachelor's degree or higher. So, we can see similar comparisons between the bachelor's and the technical college degrees. Next slide. According to Dennis Winters, who is the chief economist for the Wisconsin Office of Economic Advisors, economic trends are enveloped in three different areas, demographics, the need for higher skills and job projections. Majority of our presentation tonight will focus on the latter of, of those. However, I'd like to take just a little bit of time just to talk a little bit about the demographics component. We are on the cusp of an unprecedented period of workforce change. The greatest impact of our labor force here in Wisconsin will be from 2010 to 2030 and is caused by our baby boomer generation, which you may be already familiar with. The need to replace their knowledge and skills has already been felt in all areas of the economy. Population also contributes to workforce trends. Our population in Wisconsin is expected to grow by 22% over the 2000 to 2030 time period. However, increases will not be evenly distributed over age groups. In addition, life expectancies of both men and women are also expected to rise. Changes in the labor force participation rates also affect the economy as it is expected that older workers will stay in the labor force longer than they have in the past. Some of the contributing factors are that these workers are remaining healthier and more invested in their careers. They are wanting to contribute to society and the economy. Some are needing to continue to work due to financial or benefit needs. And at the end of one's career, some of our baby boomers want to begin yet another career. The need for higher skills across careers, all careers, is also a critical component to economic trends. As we will hear in just a few minutes, the need for both hard skills, those are specifically needed to perform a job, and soft skills, otherwise known, or we may have heard the term behavioral competencies or interpersonal skills or more plainly termed people skills. Some of the examples there are noted on the slide. Job projections in the third, is the third area viewed to indicate economic trends, which we again will expand on later in the presentation. When taking a deeper look at the need for higher skills, it goes much further beyond just the skills needed to perform a job. According to eHow.com's degree versus experience, employers are looking for ambition or the old-fashioned fire in the belly. They are also looking for the intrinsic drive. The experience in, in a field that one is applying to is also critical. Whether that experience is through an internship or it's through volunteer work, they say that the experience is, is key as the individual not only has, has had experience in the professional setting, but also knows about work ethics and the critical and analytical skills that go along with the job as well. They indicate that other bonus skills on demand are languages, green business strategies and the social media know-how. By 2018, the economy will create 46.8 million openings, 13.8 million brand-new jobs and 33 million replacement jobs, positions vacated by workers who have retired or permanently have left their positions. But as stated at the beginning of the presentation, nearly two-thirds of these 46.8 million jobs, or 63%, will require workers with at least some college education.
As we've been working to implement HSD 202025, you recognize we have been trying to raise the bar, in essence, set higher expectations for all students, putting more rigorous coursework in place. And when we look at the next slide, it is kind of interesting to note that that's just needed by all students. Just basic foundational skills in reading, writing and mathematics will be need for, needed by students just in entry-level positions right after high school, as well as all the, all the way through those entering other post-secondary choices. And to recognize that even those fastest-growing occupations require some kind of post-secondary education. This aligns then once again with our strategic plan as we keep adding more rigorous coursework throughout the K-12 system. In the next slide, just to kind of point this, bring this home a little closer, this is a study done by an international, the International Center for Leadership and Education along with Metometrics. And this is showing Lexile levels. And just a little explanation on that, Lexile framework is used to kind of assess the complexity of text. So, they take portions of text, run it through a system and they come up with these levels. Now, in previous presentations, you might have recalled hearing in the elementary guided reading levels, you know, level Z, level T, so on. We can actually take those levels and do some correlations, but for the most part, at the secondary level, we talk more about Lexile levels. And you can see then in the far left, high school students typically in grades 10, 11 and 12, you can see about where most of the material they are reading, where it falls in that Lexile level. Then it goes, moves up a little bit more when you're talking about just common classroom materials. Then look how it increases quite a bit when we talk about this personal use and then to entry-level careers. And most of this is actually due to the fact of the technical nature of most of the reading that most of us are doing. So, anything from how to get your, you know, new DVD player up and running to working with your new phones, your BlackBerrys and how to get those running. When you do correlations on those technical kinds of reading and writing, they fall at higher levels than most of the kind of literature-based programs that we see often in our English classes in high school and the college level. So, this disconnect is being addressed throughout the country. And one of those ways is through the adoption of the Common Core standards because they are linked with career readiness skills. And so, as we move forward with that in the next few years, that will be an important linkage because they do require both that literature, study of literature, as well as a huge emphasis in the secondary on informational reading and writing. So, that will be a, a piece that you will see over the next few years. Those literacy standards of the Common Core also are embedded in other areas such as social studies, the sciences and the technical subjects. The next slide is very similar, another study by the Leadership and Education that also shows again, those personal use, reading levels, as well as entry-level occupation sit up at about the highest level compared to what's commonly found in high school and college textbooks. You can see kind of that smaller band in the military and they say that's due to the fact that it's pretty common kinds of reading going on at the military, so there's not much difference in the levels that you'll find there. This again supports that implementation of rigorous levels of reading and writing throughout our system. Next slide. In one of the documents that we examine titled "Wisconsin's Forgotten Middle Skill Jobs", they lay out three levels, as you can see up here, kind of a high skill that has the four-year or higher degree required, the middle skill that encompasses even more than we've described in, described in the district because it's anything more. we've described in the district, because it's anything more than a high school diploma, and then the low-skill jobs. And there's reports out like this for almost every state, as well as the United States as a whole. And what we found then is that when we're looking at those middle-skill jobs over the next few slides, this is the area we need to strengthen as a district. Diane, next slide, please. In 2008, almost fifty-four percent of all Wisconsin jobs were middle-school jobs, representing one point five million workers. The demand for middle-school workers in the state will remain high in the next decade. This compares to low-skill jobs and high-skill jobs, which will account for twenty-five percent and twenty-nine percent of the openings, respectfully. Next slide. When we compare Wisconsin to Minnesota, which Melissa and I decided we needed to do since we sit right on that border and we have so many people traveling to Minnesota for positions, you can see some pretty common similarities in the types of jobs that will be open by the year 2016. Those middle-skill jobs are key to our nation's health, its infrastructure, and its economic growth. Many of these jobs cannot be outsourced, from the care of our sick and elderly, to the repair of our computerized cars, to the running and maintenance of our factory's advanced machinery, to the construction of our bridges and buildings. Middle-skill jobs can provide good wages and career paths for America's and Wisconsin's as well as Minnesota's workers. To kind of drive home our point, we looked at the West Central Occupational Projections and pulled out a few examples of occupations, and those that are bolded, those first six, all require then what you would find in either a technical area or a two-year associate degree, and then you could see the average annual salary. And so we're looking again at those middle-level and comparing those twos, but please don't even for the registered nurses, many of those positions are started at the technical school and then grow into a four-year degree. And just this week, actually, there's another report that just came out of Harvard that makes this statement. They state twenty-seven percent of people with post-secondary licenses or certificates, so that's credentials short of an associate's degree, earn more than the average bachelor's degree recipient. So you can see once again, those degrees can provide very high salaries and a secure career. And then in the next slide, we also found then through our Department of Workforce Development, some of the top ten industries, so not necessarily jobs or careers, but industries, and with the projection by 2018, the numbers of jobs that will be needed. And you can see then in ambulatory care, healthcare, which they list as registered nurses, medical assistants, medical secretaries, that whole realm. Hospitals also includes registered nurses, nursing aides, orderlies, attendants, radiology technologists, and technicians. And then the other one I thought you might question would be professional scientific, that's the accountants, the auditors, the lawyers, and the legal secretaries. So again, they're showing the new jobs, most new jobs between 2008 and 2018, and then if we look at this specifically by occupation, the number one listed for Wisconsin is registered nurses, that is the degree that will be most needed in the future. Second, truck drivers, heavy and tractor-trailer, and then the third is actually elementary school teachers. So you don't see that in there, but when they look at specific careers, that's how it comes out in the state of Wisconsin.
Now, I'd like to take just a minute to look at Hudson Perspective and Focus. Many of us probably recall the term vocational education as we move through, thank you, as we move through our schooling. However, that term has changed. The federal role in vocational education began as a way to prepare students for the newly industrialized workplace. Over the years, the program has evolved to match the changing economy, focused on post-secondary education as well as secondary education, while giving students skills they needed throughout their careers. In 2006, the language changed from vocational and technical to career and technical. This transition was more than just a name change. It represented a fundamental shift in philosophy from CTE, or Career Technical Education, being for those who were not going to college, to a system that prepares all students for both employment and secondary education. The integration of academics and technical education programs was strengthened, further emphasizing the goal of ensuring that students who participate in CTE are taught the same rigorous content, aligned with challenging academic standards as all other students. With all school programs now adhering to the same academic standards as Sandy spoke to, the separate track system that stigmatized CTE is disappearing. All existing careers, you'll see there I have noted sixteen clusters, seventy-nine pathways, all existing careers are organized into those sixteen clusters, which is a tool for seamless educational transition, I'm sorry, seamless educational transition that blends rigorous academic, technical preparation, provides career development, offers options for students to experience all aspects of a business or industry, and facilitates students and educators with ongoing transitions. We have brought in to our district some of the language with career clusters, we have it in our current course handbook, both the abbreviated version and the lengthy version that you'll find online. So there is a description of all of those clusters and the pathways in there as well. Next slide, please. According to the Association for Career Technical Education Consortium, students participate in programs that lead to employment in high-skill, high-wage, and or high-demand careers when participating in CTE programs. A 2004 National Assessment of Vocational Education report showed that students who participated in post-secondary CTE coursework, even without earning credentials, earned a higher yearly salary than high school students or graduates, sorry, who do not take post-secondary CTE courses. In just a moment, we'll take a look at an example of this and how it currently works for our students here in our high school. ECTE also highlights that CTE programs provide the skills training that addresses needs of high-growth industries such as healthcare, which Sandy had just stated previously, which comprises seven of the twenty fastest-growing occupations according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Renewable energy, which could generate up to $4.3 trillion in revenue and create more than thirty-seven million jobs, or more than seventeen percent of the anticipated U.S. employment by 2030. The STEM CTE cluster prepares students for careers in engineering and computer science, which are critical areas for the economic future of our country. As part of the requirements for the Education for Employment Plan 2009 to 2014, which was approved by the Board December 8th of 2009, schools must provide opportunities for tech prep. Articulation agreements are one vehicle with which to make this happen. In Hudson, we have both Advanced Standing and Transcripted Credit agreements with WITC and the Wisconsin Tech College System, as well as Dakota County Technical College in Minnesota. Now, I'd like to take some time to just go through the difference between Advanced Standing and Transcripted Credit, as that can be a little bit confusing. When we take a look at Advanced Standing, we do currently, as I spoke to with WITC, we have eighteen courses right now that have Advanced Standing agreements in our Career Technical Education departments, and we have one that was piloted for Transcripted Credit, so just to kind of put that in perspective. Advanced Standing agreements provide high school students with the opportunity to obtain Advanced Standing for successful completion of high school coursework that's comparable to college coursework. The process is developed by WITC or the Wisconsin Tech College System, whereas a list of the courses that they would like to review, they form a joint curriculum review team, and they decide which courses they would like to offer to high schools to be able to articulate. The course competencies and learning objectives are all identified, and they are then brought to high school instructors. So if we have an interested high school teacher who maybe wants to create an agreement, they then would take a look at all of the competencies and the learning objectives for that comparable course at the tech college level. They complete the review form, saying how our students measure up with a skill level, and then they also supply their curriculum as well as sample assessments. So it's kind of have that competency review form, sample assessments, and curriculum that all goes to the tech college system. They then determine whether or not an agreement can even be formed. And if it is, then they are stating, or WITC or the tech college system is stating, that eighty percent of the competencies are met, that we meet. It's not quite a hundred percent match, but that we meet eighty percent. Then if a student were to take that course and earn a grade of B or better, then they would have the opportunity to, upon registration in a particular program, they could then receive credit for those credits already earned in high school. Transcripted credit agreements take on just a little bit of a different look. They provide the high school students with the opportunity, again, to take WITC courses that are taught by their high school instructors, and they receive a WITC transcript. So that's one of the major differences, is that they actually teach the course here in our school. High school instructors deliver the course to our students with a WITC mentor serving as a guide and a reference and a resource to assure that the content is comparable to the courses at the college level. For a course to be considered for Transcripted Credit, it must meet several different criteria, including it must have the same content, competencies, and learning objectives, the same student mastery expectations, assessment standards, and grading standards, as would be at the tech college. WITC grades are given through Transcripted Credit and reflect the same assessment strategies and level of rigor in that course. It is important to note, too, that the WITC grades are determined by achievement in the course objectives only. They cannot look at attendance, effort, extra credit, or anything like that, that cannot factor into a student grade. Another one of the criteria is that they need to have the same or agreed-upon equivalent textbook, software, and equipment facilities, and the high school teachers must hold a valid Wisconsin DPI license and complete the application. So those are kind of the steps that they need to take. I have a couple of examples here. First is an example with our Transcripted Credit course. Tom Clatt is one of our technical education instructors who teaches a welding course. He piloted for WITC the Transcripted Credit for welding. This slide indicates that when a student takes both welding one, welding two, and completes coursework for WITC, he or she will receive two technical college credits, saving $234 or approximately. These credits may then transfer into three different WITC programs. Here I have noted just one of those programs, being automated packaging systems technician, which shows that here, too, again, if we take two years at the high school level, one may move into that program and take two years there, earn the associate's degree, it may not take two years, but may take a little less, you know, with the credits being honored. And then they may move into UW-Stouts Packaging Program. WITC and UW-Stouts have an articulation agreement as well, so those credits transfer directly into that program. So thus, when we hear the term two plus two plus two, which you may or may not have heard, that's kind of an example of how one may move through. And I just noted some example salaries there with the associate's degree and then an average that UW-Stouts notes on their website for the packaging program. A second example is through Chippewa Valley Technical College. This one is a little bit trickier, as we do not offer currently the nursing assistant course in our school. While in high school, if a student takes the nursing assistant course, passes the Pearson View, secures a position as a nursing assistant in a healthcare facility, they may or may, and they need to also apply for the youth apprenticeship and complete a one-year youth apprenticeship as a nursing assistant. Their tuition, test costs, and some course materials are paid for an approximate savings of $700. If the student completes a two-year youth apprenticeship, he or she is eligible for credit transfer to Chippewa Valley Technical College worth another $212, as their credits noted for this coming year will be, I'm sorry, I think that's this year, should have been $106. The financing for this is made available through our Youth Apprenticeship Grant, which is based on employment projections for our student population one year prior to the grant submission. Some students don't opt for the youth apprenticeship option. Sometimes they write a proposal to you for youth options, and then may or may not be approved to have that course taken and paid for that way. The nursing assistant is required as a prerequisite for both the two- and four-year nursing programs in Wisconsin. The Association for Career and Technical Education reports that three of every four healthcare workers in Wisconsin are educated in the technical college system. So here, once again, we can see how our students can benefit from the two-plus-two-plus-two program.
So as you can hopefully see, we are trying to make sure that all of our students have kind of a seamless system, have a lot of information to know what kind of career choices and pathways there are in order to get to very successful options, post-secondary options, once they graduate from our schools. That will involve some different things occurring at our counseling efforts, which you've heard a little bit about some of the ASCA model that's going on with some of the counseling there, but as well as even just the little things like Melissa mentioned with our handbook and aligning those with pathways, and then some of the things going on with high school of the future as well, some of the additions with Project Lead the Way and other rigorous coursework that is linked up with the current technical fields. But more than anything, it's just for all of us, you know, the board, the community, the parents, everyone to understand that a four-year isn't the only way to go and find some successful options for our students. We really need to broaden that so that our students have a much more opportunities available to them in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandy and Melissa. Other questions from the board members?
Madam President, I just have a question about the articulation agreements. Are those just within the Wisconsin school system? Or are there articulation agreements within, I mean, we're obviously close to Minnesota schools as well?
Yes. The agreements that are written, the articulation agreements, whether they're Advanced Standing or Transcripted Credit, that are written for the Wisconsin Tech College System are good in all sixteen tech colleges in the state. Minnesota does it a little differently. They had a system before, very similar to Wisconsin's, however, we write those on an individual, school-to-school basis. So with that being said, there are so many variations with curriculums throughout Minnesota that it does become difficult. Dakota County Technical College, the ones that we do have written will expire this year, and those also required that we had to pay for those in order to have those to be written.
Any other questions?
Yes. You had said that if they had a B or more in these Advanced Standings, then they will, don't they also take a test at the end that they need to pass or get a college credit?
Not with Advanced Standing or Transcripted Credit, because with Advanced Standing, they meet the eighty percent competencies, and with Transcripted Credit, it is an exact match, close to an exact match for the curriculum, the tech college curriculum taught in our high school.
So there is something else, that they take a test, a college test, that's another...
Yeah, you might be thinking of either the Project Lead the Way, because there is an assessment there, a national assessment, as well as most of our AP courses, Advanced Placement has a national assessment as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dan?
Hi. I have a question. I'm looking at these ten industries with the most new jobs, and trying to correlate that with, that's going out to 2018, correlate that with how we're preparing for that, especially in the healthcare services, social assistance, food and beverage. How does that relate with, you know, where we're going with our strategic plan and trying to truly prepare our students for being, if not, you know, at this level, you know, being prepared to move into either the, you know, the associate degree level or the four-year college degree level?
One, Melissa is looking at options that can be correlated with the technical schools in many of those healthcare arenas, as well as just yesterday, a team of our science teachers and Melissa and I went over to... and I went, and Melissa and I, went over to East Ridge High School in Woodbury. They're one of five in the state. I don't know if you recall, when we had our review for the Project Lead the Way engineering portion, they mentioned to us that they have a very new program in biomedical engineering. And so we went over to look at the program and get a sense of kind of like the when, not if, but kind of the when can we possibly bring that into the district. But every student we talked to that was in the program over there, they're looking at some kind of medical profession. So that would be a key piece to look at as we're moving forward.
Follow-up question. How does this information get communicated to our students so that as they're, you know, working their way up to, you know, the upper level of their high school career, that they can, you know, get a sense of where the need seems to be moving?
Yeah, that's probably an area we need to somehow improve. They hear some of it through things like their eighth grade counseling sessions, ninth, well, in every grade, they have counseling sessions as they get through registration. But it does become difficult to get all of this information out there. So that's probably an area of improvement.
I think it's important to note too, that all areas are required to address within their standards or their standards to address career components. So again, we have to improve, but yet there are some who maybe do a little better job with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add on to that, we are working with UW River Falls, CTVC and WITC, as well as the school district of River Falls, on an agreement and a vision process. And one of the areas that we're talking about is how do we increase our communication to students about these options and pathways so that they can make good choices in selection of their courses? So that's one of the goals of this group that we'll be bringing forward to you in the near future.
President?
Pat?
One more question. You said that about the nurses assistant program, that we don't have it right now. Can, can the students participate in this or are we looking at bringing this in to start? I know WITC has a small course.
Right, WITC has programs, Red Cross, Chippewa Valley. So students sometimes take it through youth apprenticeship, some through youth options and some simply do it on their own.
Okay. All right, thanks again. All right. Tim, final report on the middle school addition construction.
Yeah, thanks. I've got Tom Hoffman from Hoffman LLC who's going to come up, talk a little bit about the project. And I think a phrase that we want you all to remember is on time and under budget. And a very nice facility, quality. And so Tom is going to talk a little bit about some of the features of the addition, some of the challenges and some of the nice things that we really got out of this project. So Tom, would you take it away?
A little closer, Tom.
And have your button up.
You can actually move it closer to you.
How's that?
Better.
Great. Appreciate you inviting me here to speak with you tonight. I'd also just like to extend a thank you to the construction group that we worked with throughout the project. Without a good core team to be able to make decisive decisions, it, projects have a tendency to stumble a little bit. And Tim and Jim Staskil, along with Dan and Jim, the principals over at the middle school, and Suzie over at the elementary school, they were very vital. We also met with Mary throughout the project when we had one of our greater challenges. And the ability for them to make very decisive and logical and accurate decisions timely is very critical to keep the project going, especially one that had such a very tight schedule as this one did. Well, first of all, as Tim mentioned, the project came in under budget and that was good because we had some very significant challenges. When we went, when we met with you at the beginning of the project, we went into the project with $120,000 worth of construction contingency. One of the wild cards we knew that was potentially out there is that we had, one of our borings showed some minor poor soils conditions. So we had a little bit of a, of a small contingency set aside to do that. However, it, once we got into the construction, we discovered that that area was a lot more contaminated with poor soils than what we ever, than what the borings showed. Now, you've got to remember, a boring just takes a little pokes at the ground to get a better understanding as to what is there. But however, once you get a backhoe into it, it reveals a lot more hidden secrets. Another of the things that we are very proud of with this project is that we were able to utilize a lot of local contractors. Zappa Excavating did all the excavating, Monarch Paving did the paving work on the project. All the mechanicals were done by local contractors. JNL Steel and Electric handled the electrical work. Bolts Plumbing and Heating did the plumbing and the HVAC work. And Painting America did the painting work on the project. We also purchased all of the materials for the masonry from County Concrete, which is just down the road a little ways. So that was really critical that we were able to utilize that much local help. And I had mentioned to Tim that I remember one morning when the masons were first starting out, one of the parents from the middle school who had been out of work came up to me and asked me about if the masons were hiring. And I got him in touch with one of the mason contractors, or the mason contractor, who was from out of town, but he got on board and he worked for a good period of time throughout the entire project. So that was excellent because he was a good union mason that was out of work and needed a place to work. So that was great that we were able to connect him up and get him working with one of the contractors that happened to be from out of town. So if you, if you could go back to the first slide, I'm sorry. This is a picture, we talked about the soils correction work. This is a picture taken between the elementary school gymnasium and the pool. And it's kind of hard to see, but where Gary Zappa happens to be standing, you can see a very thick layer of darker material. And as we were digging out to put in the basement portion of the project, we started running into a lot of unsuitable soils. And at that point right there, we were probably about nine feet below the footing level of the basement. So we're talking fairly significant soils correction. A lot of times soils correction will only be a couple of feet over digging. We're talking literally tens of thousands of cubic yards of material that had to be removed and replaced. One of the great benefits of using local contractors is that Gary is very familiar with the site. He's very, he's done work for the district. And he brought to my attention that when he put the storm sewer in seventeen years ago, done by the athletic field behind the school, that the sand out there was just perfect for doing the soils correction work that we needed to do on this project. If you go to the next slide, please? So what we did is we convinced Suzie that she only needed half of her soccer field out there. And we went out and dug a big hole and stole all of her sand. So as you can see, there's a large pile of sand behind the elementary school that's kind of brown. And then there's a pile of sand to the left of the backhoe that is top soil that we stripped off. But right where the backhoe is, you can see real nice clean sand. And that's what we kind of needed for the structural backfill that we needed to replace the poor soils with. So if you go to the next slide, please? As we were excavating, we discovered that the poor soils were what you might say even more extensive than we had ever hoped. So what we did is we excavated out strictly underneath the main bearing foundation walls for the building and brought in concrete trucks and poured a very lightweight slurry in rather than continue to dig out and run the risk of undermining the neighboring buildings. We were well below the depth of the pool. We were twenty-two feet below the depth of the adjacent gymnasium at the elementary school and we couldn't go any deeper without needing to drive some sort of reinforcing. So what we did is we built a big bridge across these poor soils. And it's a very effective way. We minimized the amount of additional material we would have had to go through. So what we did is we just dug out the footing lines through the poor soils and filled in with a slurry this material. So that slurry in these trenches is about eight feet deep. And it's just a solid big mass of concrete that we used as the very base of the, of the main basement and the main structural support for the building. Okay, next. Here is an example of the slurry poured in underneath the basement areas and we're starting to fill in. At the top of the picture, you can see about a five-foot lift of sand over the top of what is slurry to carry that in. But then you can see how much soil we had to remove to try to get a lot of this foundation in. Next, please. Again, picture of the borrow pit. The payloader would take a scoop of poor soils back, bring a scoop of good soil to the site. And the savings was significant. If we would have had to import correct material, we would have taken probably a $36,000 soils correction job and probably tripled it. And we would have chewed up all of our contingency in one whack. So kudos to Gary Zappa for even suggesting this because we were trying to figure out what we were going to do. So, next, please? So the building went together great and with this, we were able to save a good bit of the contingency for other things that the school had really hoped that they could take advantage of. This is actually a picture at Christmas time of the existing gymnasium, or multipurpose room and cafeteria. And the tile in that area had, had served its time. And there was some areas of movement with the existing slabs in those areas that we went in and corrected and laid a brand-new floor down to help make the transition between the new space and the existing space seamless. This is a picture of the new orchestra room. And I met with the orchestra teacher today and she just loves it. She said that the sound panels and the acoustics are just great. She said she couldn't be more thrilled. So that's, that's great because music teachers are sometimes hard to... No offense.
I wouldn't go there.
Anyway, next, please. I'll leave it at that. This is a picture of the multipurpose room taken from the existing area. A couple of the added features that I will get to shows some exercise drills that were added to the vinyl tile. We've got some ladder stations and some dot patterns that were put in there. The gym teachers had requested that for FIED and other drills that they do. In the background, you can see the weight room through there. And I guess the thing I'd like to point out is if you remember the old multipurpose room had all the windows along that east wall, we were able to incorporate a lot of windows into the new space and, and it really adds a lot of light to the new space as well as back into the existing, even though we've eliminated an exterior wall. Next, next. Here's a picture of the multipurpose room looking back towards the existing room. Those two large openings are part of a three-hour wall system. We have to create the fire separations necessary to tie onto existing buildings. So those are big coiling shutters. Here again is a picture of the new tile in the old school, looking back through the three-hour doors and looking into the new space. And one of the things that will show up on the next slide, or I mean, on the list of amenities that we got, is that entire existing area, we repainted all the walls. So we took all the black marks off and everything from the years of use as a commons. We replanted the ceilings, all the walls and everything. And the two spaces look very much like they were built at the same time now. New floors in both areas, looks really nice. One of the things that we were able to accomplish because the bids came in so good is that we were able to take some of the contingency dollars and incorporate a new underground storage area. That's all a concrete foundation with precast roof and, and it's going to be great for the maintenance crew and the, for outdoor and athletic facility storage. And there's the first day that was taken, I think about three minutes and forty-seven seconds after we got the occupancy permit. That, the kids no longer had to do their runs in the hallways, so they were pretty excited. If you go to the, oh, the last slide. One of the things I just guessed that I'd like to point out here, on the very far right is the existing elementary school and on the far left is the back of the pool. And the addition, if, if you didn't really know that it was inserted into that, now the shading looks a little different on the pool than it is, but the brick is a perfect match. It's the exact brick that was used. So it's a very, it's very attractive. It infilled the, that courtyard very well and, and it, it fits the architectural significance of the area, so. If you would go to the next file then, please? What we wanted to do is just take a look at the things that as, as Hoffman is very proud of and as a school district is, is very in tune to is sustainability. The addition was designed to a LEED Silver standard. Virtually all of the materials, the waste materials on the project were recycled where possible. So all the cardboard, all the scrap metal, all the scrap wood, all the scrap concrete and masonry rubble, all the demolition materials, all of that was recycled or taken to a fill site that needed solid fill or whatever. So we were able to save on not disturbing other sites by using local borrowed material for the soils correction work. There was very low impact to the site by the fact that we took a previously paved surface and instead of it being a paved surface now, it's, that water goes onto a roof. And so environmentally, we aren't adding any more hard surface than what was already part of the original landscape there. A lot of the concrete, masonry and steel products were all locally produced. A lot of the concrete, masonry and steel products were all locally produced. There's a whole list of things there. A couple of the real important ones are low VOC paints, mastics, sealants, caucks, things like that that were vital. But I don't need to review every one of these items, but this is a list of all of the added sustainable features that were incorporated into the design and into the construction. One of the things that I do want to point out is about the high-efficiency rooftop units and the ability that-- think about it. We had three exterior walls that we infilled with this addition. So where we eliminated a whole bunch of exterior walls, we only have one exterior wall now. So the heat load requirements of the new addition were very minimal because we actually, you know, we have more roof space, but we have a lot less exterior wall space. So the capacity of the existing boilers were such that we were able to just tap into those. And they probably didn't even realize that they're heating, you know, the additional space because of the reduced exterior wall loads that-- or heat loss loads that the existing building had. So that's great. I mean, you're probably heating and cooling this building at the same-- virtually the same cost that you were doing with just the existing building that you had. So that's great. Go to the next. This is a list of amenities that we were able to incorporate into the budget based on that $120,000 contingency. We still are holding about half of that contingency left. And we were able to incorporate all of these items and that includes that huge hit that we took for the pore soils. We added the storage facility in the basement. We replaced the VCT tile and fixed all the poor concrete work in the existing multipurpose room. Instead of hollow metal entrances that were originally designed, we went with all aluminum entrances at the addition. We repainted the entire multipurpose room area. We-- the elementary school did not have-- (noise) --a signature sign. We had all the contractors on site, so for them to just mobilize over it was... Couldn't have got it any cheaper than when all the excavator and the concrete crew and the masonry crews were working there. So we were able to work in a brand-new sign for Prairie Elementary School, which it did not have. The basketball hoops and backstops that you saw in some of the pictures, those were originally going to come out of the FFNE budget, but we were able to take them out of the construction budget. We-- once we got looking at some of the areas around the entrances, it made a lot more sense to pave some of those areas versus try to landscape them and have little spots of area where the kids were going to be kind of traversing across anyway. So we made those hard surfaces. And so we had three of those areas that we did. Two of them down by the new entrance that we added. And then we added some hard pavement surface up near the main addition. We added concrete around the dumpster areas to replace some poor concrete that was heaved and pitched and cracked and stuff. We fixed a lot of that area over by the old elementary school. One of the things that we had hoped we could do is we added a-- and this is on the docket for some spring work, but we added a very large cedar fence across from the drive entrance to block the dumpsters from the neighbors. So the neighbors can't really look out their back window now. And where they used to see the back of the elementary school, now there's a row of dumpsters there. Well, we're going to construct a very nice-looking cedar fence along that whole parking side area that will be a visual impedance for them to be able to see those dumpsters. We've added some tiered landscape boulder areas that we did in order to minimize the amount of landscaping and maintenance that the maintenance staff would have to do in some of those areas. We added some features to the display light. We added a railing system that the city building inspector asked us to install based on the fact that he didn't like the fact-- there's a significant grade change from the back of the building to the side of the building. And so he wanted the people using the building to have to exit onto a little bit more level ground. So we had to add an exterior railing to the building. And then, as I mentioned about the dot drills and ladder drills that we did. If you'd scroll down just a bit. Again, some of the things we don't want to lose sight of is the additional dollars necessary to do the proper engineering, design and analysis of the soils correction work so that we made the right decisions, so that we weren't being, you know, penny-wise and dollar-foolish on making a good decision for the structure in long-term of that addition. We had the excavation for the pore soils. We had the added structural enhancements. We beefed up the foundations to help bridge across the pore soil areas that we corrected. And then we have the additional landscape seating for the borrow pit. So I think if you go to the next slide, we'll just quickly review a couple of the... What we always do with a project-- (cough) Excuse me-- --is we do an analysis for LEED certification. This project was not LEED certified. However, if it had been, it would have at least meant a Silver standard. I believe this building is Gold standard if I'm not mistaken. That building, if certain things would have been done, that could have also meant a Gold standard. However, with it being as small as it was and not being able to utilize some of the points that a building like this is able to get with some of the prairies and the ponds and a lot of the bathroom features and the locker room features, that you're able to get a lot more points for low-water utilization. We aren't as flexible with a smaller addition like this that's like an infill. But we easily would have been able to certify it as Silver. And being creative, we probably could have met that Gold standard as well. So I think everybody that was involved with the project is very proud of it and I think it will serve the middle school very well. Any questions?
I'm sure there are. So--
Thank you.
Thank you. To hear, you know, the words on time and-- And then, you know, maintaining what we've been trying to do over the years with, you know, the sustainability, the environmentally friendliness.
It's the right thing to do.
It's the right thing to do, being sensitive to neighbors. Just a lot of the things that you pointed out are pleasing to hear to me. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was just wondering about the girls' locker room. Did that get taken care of?
Oh, yes. I didn't take a picture of that. Yes, we were where the existing weight room was. We took out some door frames and infilled those areas. And that is an expanded dressing area or meeting area for the girls' locker room. And the weight-- all that weight equipment found a very spacious home over in the new addition.
I have one final question. I want to echo part of what Dan said about how encouraging it is to hear all of the local contractors that you used as part of this project. That's terrific news.
Thank you.
The question that I had had to do with the last little bit that you were talking about, Tom, in terms of the LEED Silver. So we-- this project wouldn't-- would have been rated LEED Silver except for...
Except for that we didn't do the process.
Ah.
It costs money to certify.
Yes.
This building, as you know, is certified and there was an expense with that. There's not only application expenses, but there's all kinds of additional costs on our end that we would have to do to document every little thing. We did everything that we would normally have done to certify the building, except all the final documentation and paperwork. And that's very time-consuming and very meticulously needing to be done. But we recycled all of the things that we would have done. It's just that we didn't keep meticulous records of what we did. We just said, "This is what we're going to do," and we did it. And so-- and things like scrap material-- or scrap metal and things, when they haul it off to the scrapyard, they give us money back to the project. So it like pays for the dumpster fees on the real trash, which is great because you don't have any disposal fees then because they offset each other.
Great. Thank you for that.
Sure.
Madam President, just a couple of quick--
Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. Great report, Tom. Thank you. And just going to repeat again, on time and under budget. Can't hear that enough. Couple of things just piqued my interest. Could you tell me just briefly about this, the heat reflective white roof? I happen to see that on the sheet going down.
Yes, that is one of the features that is... Everybody used to think that in our climate, we actually would need a black roof to help absorb heat. But actually, your amount of heating degree days are less than the days that you would need to actually cool the space. And it costs more to cool the space actually than heat it. Because you insulate it so well that-- and all the warm bodies and the lights and the computers and all those things generate heat, you almost spend more time trying to cool a building. Plus, you don't have all of that heat gain in the atmosphere by having that black, dark surface. So by having this light-colored surface, you're able to have less of an impact on the environment.
And it's actually energy-saving, isn't it?
Yes.
You're telling me? Okay. That's exactly my thought.
Right. You have to go-- you have to probably go about another 200 miles north of here to have it kind of flip-flop the other way.
Okay. Just, I guess it seems counterintuitive--
Yeah.
--because it's so darn cold for so darn long here.
Right, right.
Okay.
So just the Minneapolis--
This roof is all white.
The Minneapolis Convention Center just went with the all white PVC roofing for exactly the same reason.
Yes.
So it's becoming more commonplace in this market.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. And just last, just tell me, what-- pore soils, what did that mean? I don't remember--
Pore soils are soils that have organic material in there. And organic material will break down through time. And when they break down, they shrink. So they disappear. And they will-- you just don't bear buildings on pore soils, on soils that have organic matter and things like that. So what we did is we went in and got rid of it. And when we got to the point where we got rid of it all underneath the slabs that we felt we could safely take out, then we just went in and took it out from underneath the footing lines and went right down to the very bottom of it and filled it in with slurry as quickly as we could so that we didn't chance undermining the adjacent spaces. So--
So it's kind of what you're looking for, a percentage of, I guess, clay or sand that would be more--
Correct. You're looking for material that has very low percentages of organics and also has the bearing capacity that the building, you know, and this building probably only has like a 3,000 PSI, pounds per square foot, bearing capacity. So you need to have soils that would meet those minimum requirements to bear your building on so that you wouldn't condense the material underneath the building from the weight of the building.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now that we've had the report on this, hopefully you're looking forward to that open house and being able to actually tour the building itself. It's quite remarkable. Another great project for us, thanks to the work of Hoffman.
Thank you.
And I just want to recognize the work and leadership of our financial services director, Tim Erickson, representing the district, and then Jim Stayskill, who's been our owner's representative again on this project. And that team has worked very well with Hoffman to make this another high-quality project for the district.
And like I also mentioned, we couldn't have done it without the cooperation of all the rest of the maintenance over at the two schools and the principals. They were-- Suzie did a great job with her gatekeepers there at the playground and stuff because we had to bring a lot of trucks right through the middle of her playground. So we really appreciate that. That's-- the cooperation on everybody's part was crucial.
Thanks again, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, we are now in the Topics for Action section of the agenda. And Nancy, we have two petitions for property transfer requests.
Right. There are two petitions to alter school district boundaries. And before the board considers each of them separately, I'll just give some introduction and background information to the process itself. This is a Wisconsin statutory-driven process, 117.12. There's a specific timeline associated with it. It's February. The petitioners must petition each of the school districts, the school district that they wish to detach from, and also the school district that they wish to attach their property to. And both districts must approve that detachment and attachment in order for it to happen. The petitioners, however, do have a right of appeal to the Department of Public Instruction if either of the school districts decline their request. Generally, school districts across the state will approve requests for attachment and generally decline a request for detachment. And basically, that's because an attachment of property carries with it a permanent transfer of real estate tax money. Districts with declining enrollment are particularly interested in attaching new territory because it would bring with the property, in some cases, students and increased state educational aid. We have an interesting, different kind of perspective. Hudson is a district with enrollment growth. And we also have some capacity issues. So you have to keep those, and I know you will, keep those characteristics in mind. What each of the petition carries information that's important for you to consider. And I will summarize one at a time the information along this line. But the petitions tell us what the value of the property is, what the tax value is, whether there are pupils or not, whether the land is improved or not, whether it's just land or if it does have housing on it. And also property location. We have some map in each case to show you. And we'll also comment on any busing, transportation implications. So I'll move to the first petition, unless you have questions about the process at all. Okay. And the first petition is provided by James and Shanna Roecamp, who list their address as 3602 Blue Jay Way in Eagan, Minnesota. This property is unimproved. It's a piece of land. And actually, to tell-- just to share with the board, we needed to call the Department of Public Instruction about that because we've-- because we've never had a request, in our memory at least, for just the attachment of land. It always, in the past, has carried with it a house. But it is permissible. It is permissible that the property does not have to have a house on it. So just so you know that. The total acreage of this property is 23, 2.3 acres, land only. The value is $93,000. The taxes presently, in 2010, were $14,950. Again, because it's only land and not improved, there are no students presently on that property. Diane, do you have the map? Okay. So the... If you look at the map itself, the red line shows the current division between the Hudson School District attendance boundaries and then, you know, to the east, the River Falls School District boundaries. And the property in question is A. If you can take a look at that, the 2.3 acres. All of the properties adjacent to it are currently River Falls School District properties. And that is one of the criteria that this board has considered in the past and other boards in the state do as well. Does the property, is the property contiguous to ours? Is it adjacent to ours? Or if one were to approve an attachment, would it create an island? And in this case, this property would create an island. Doesn't prohibit you from approving it, but it is one of the considerations that boards have, which would mean that we would be, in terms of busing, would be driving through River Falls properties and actually stopping and picking up children if children actually eventually would live on that site. The Facilities and Grounds Committee last night considered this property. I think in this particular instance, the administration did have a recommendation that you not approve this property for attachment to the Hudson School District.
Are there any questions of Nancy before we act on this item? No? Is there a motion? Sir, if you want to speak to the board, you certainly can do that if you would grab a yellow form from Diane Radell here for a citizen's request to speak on this topic.
Madam President, maybe while we're waiting for this... Nancy, do we have any history of, you know, for so-called island requests like this?
The... Last year, there was one petition to alter school district boundaries. You did approve, and that was from the River Falls School District to the Hudson School District. This board did approve that request, and that property was contiguous. It was contiguous to the Hudson School District boundaries. A few years ago, I can recall another request south, along, actually along the river, and multiple homeowners came together and petitioned this board. And this board did approve that request. The River Falls School District declined that request. They appealed and prevailed, and that parcel is now attached. Actually, both parcels are attached to the Hudson School District. But in both cases, they did not create islands of land within the River Falls School District.
Thank you, Nancy. So Todd Roecamp, if you want to step forward to the microphone and state your name and your address?
Good evening, my name is Todd Roecamp, actually James Roecamp, I go by Todd. And I live at currently 3602 Blue J Way in Eagan. My wife and I own the parcel land, and we've broken ground and are planning on moving in June. And we have three children, a two-year-old, a four-year-old who will be entering kindergarten in the 2011, 2012 school year, and a first grader who will be going into second grade during that time. And then the appraised value of the home and land is $450,000 within there.
Thank you, I'm sorry. So, having heard Nancy and the recommendation on the part of Facilities and Grounds on the issue of this transfer of property, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to deny the petition.
Motion by Lynn.
I'll second it.
Second by Dan. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion to deny. Thank you, Todd. Nancy, the next petition.
Okay. The next petition has been submitted by Peter and Alice Jones, who currently live at 1382 Awatukee. We hopefully are saying that right. Awatukee Trail, A-W-A-T-U-K-E-E, with a Hudson, Wisconsin, address. And also, and they are owners and electors of... Actually, there are three parcels associated with this request. And they own, if you could show Diane the map, they own parcel A, which does have improvement and does have a home on it. And no children presently of school age are indicated to reside there. The parcels B and C are owned by Janet and Richard Stout, who live at 1353 Awatukee. And they are owners. And those properties, B and C, are land-only. They are unimproved land. And I'll share with you the value here. The combined acreage of these three parcels is 28.3 acres of land. The combined value of these properties is $442,800. And the taxes are $7,667. As you can see from the map, the, again, our Hudson School District boundaries are shown in red, a solid red, separate from the Somerset School District north of us. And you can see that our boundary slightly touches the one parcel, C. Slightly touches that. And we do, of course, have busing in that particular area. And we did actually physically go and take a look at this and actually measure out whether, if there were a student, let's say, that lived in parcel A, and it is too far, though, to walk down to the road. And we would be taking a bus up into that area. Presently, there's no area to turn a bus around. You know, buses can't back into driveways and, I mean, pull in and back out and turn around. They have to go around. And the road around these parcels is about a mile. It's about a mile that the bus would need to travel. So there would be additional bus mileage. Again, as these property, this property may fill up with students that we would have to bus. And it doesn't create an island because of that little tiny piece of boundary that it touches. It creates kind of a finger into, or a peninsula, into the Somerset School District property. And it's, you can see, it's quite a potential development there. And there's pluses and minuses here to going one way or the other on this. The property values are high and could get considerably higher with houses on there. It could cause other petitioners to come forward and expand that whole area for attachment request to the Hudson School District. Eventually, we may have more capacity. This would be the Holton Elementary School, which, you know, is a two-section building right now. And, you know, right now, if it all filled up, it would be a little difficult to handle. But who knows what the future will... It's kind of a future prediction here that you may have to undertake. The administration was less certain about giving you a recommendation on that. Mary, if you'd like to comment on that?
The committee did decide to recommend denial of this property as well.
Madam President, I have a question for Nancy. Nancy, you physically went to the site or somebody physically went to the site?
Jim Stayskill, our Facilities and Grounds Coordinator, did go there today and did measure out and did look at the transportation potential there.
Okay, and is A the only property where there is housing planned? Or is there...
There's a house on that property right now.
On A, but none of the...
B and C do not have houses on there. He reported, you heard from him directly. Tim, do you want to make a comment there?
Tim, I'm specifically asking about the properties contiguous to the... I don't know what direction it is.
Did you say on B and C, was it?
No.
You're asking about?
I'm asking about the top.
Actually, all the adjacent properties to the east and the west of A, B and C.
Yeah, the north.
Yeah, there's some development out there, there's some houses. Not every lot is filled, but there are some, especially if you look on Bass Lake, right along there as well.
So the house on A is not the only home in that neighborhood?
No, no.
I'm not sure if we can help, but we filled out the form. I don't want to mess with the procedure, but we went there, so we might be able to answer a few questions.
So I have a citizen's request to speak by Alice Jones, Peter Jones, and Jan Stout. We will recognize you now. If you'll come to the microphone and introduce yourself with your name and your address, and then feel free to address the board.
Thank you, I'm sorry to, I'm sure I screwed that up. I'm Peter Jones, I live at 1382 Awatukee Trail.
I'm Alice Jones, I live at 1382 Awatukee as well. And this is my mother. And I'm Jan Stout. And just to speak to what actually happened here. The big horseshoe that you see is Awatukee. My husband's a developer, and you may know that we own a lot of property in Hudson, and a lot of property in Somerset. And all of Awatukee was in, we developed all that, and we saved...
Jan, can you speak into the microphone? We're not able to hear you.
We specifically saved that 28 acres because we wanted to save lots for our kids in case they would ever want to live out there, which is why it hasn't been developed up until now. A is, I believe, the way that they divided this up because Alice and Pete have a recorded lot. We did a two-lot CSM, which is A and B, I think. Because Alice and Pete have nine acres, the other one is six. And that could be split again, and the layout of C is approximately four. But it's, I would let my husband sell this for 35 years, and I'm not gonna let him sell it until all my kids... I have three married daughters, two of whom live in Hudson now. Kids are in the Hudson School District. Alice has a four-year-old, who has been in Stillwater at the Children's Farm. And so we're trying to decide what to do. And just coincidentally, I got a chance to meet with Nancy Sweet about something else almost a year ago.
Yeah, I remember that, that was a while ago.
And she mentioned, I said, "Well, open enrollment." And it's great conceptually, but we all know what the problem with open enrollment is. Is it's only as good as the openings in any district. Somerset's chock-full, Hudson's chock-full. So I said, "Well, what are some other options?" Knowing that I had this acreage and I knew that it just barely touched there because I had checked on the tax rolls to see where these schools paid their taxes. And Andersons, who are retired couple, are the furthest to the... Obviously, the top is the northern boundary of your district, and so that's the western boundary. So we kind of touch. I understand the problem about busing. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I have my four-year-old, Grace, who will start kindergarten in the fall. And then I have a two-year-old, and I'm expecting one more. My two-year-old will be in preschool in Stillwater as well. So busing, I don't know if this is important to consider or not, but busing won't be something that I would be asking for from the Hudson School District because I will be delivering my two-year-old to preschool on a daily basis. So I would plan to drive my daughter Grace as well to school, to kindergarten. I guess, I had a couple other things to say that might be off the subject, but if I could just...
I just want to just finish the one thing about the land itself, and that is that we thought this might be a good time to ask for the redistricting because there currently are zero students there. Somerset is full, you're full. But it's more likely that Hudson is going to have to do something sooner than Somerset. When the bridge went back to the Sierra Club, their growth is going to not be as fast as it continues to be here. And so it occurred to me that it, in terms of somebody taking it on, if you're going to have to build new schools anyway, you might be interested in having additional.
Okay, thank you.
The rest was mostly just... May I say one more thing?
I assume it's related to this petition.
It is related, the petition, yes. I just wanted to say that I grew up on Awatukee Trail, so I was in the Somerset School District. I'm a big believer in public education, and my husband and I look forward to being active participants in our children's public education, no matter which school district that ends up being. I do, as you can tell, have a very close family, and we all do enjoy each other. I currently have two sisters in the Hudson School District, and we do share, right now, drop-off and pick-up duties and childcare duties. I have one sister who works, and so I help with her childcare. I understand completely that the Hudson School District is very full, and I've spoken with some people within the district. So I recognize that we are asking to be added to a school district that is very full. So I guess that's, and I understand that this is just a personal appeal at this point, but I just wanted to say that in terms of our children, we raise them as though, they don't understand the word cousin to them, they're brothers and sisters. And so I just wanted to present that as the way we live. So, thank you very, very much for hearing us tonight.
Well, thank you for your personal appeal. Okay, are there other questions from the board on this petition? Nancy, I just have one clarifying question. On these petitions that have been completed, the clerk of the other school district, so in this case it would be Somerset, has signed it. That signature, does that indicate approval? Or is it just an acknowledgement that they have received the documentation?
It's just acknowledgement that they received the petition.
Okay, and so the Somerset District would have to still go back and approve the transfer if we were to approve the same, if we were to approve this petition this evening?
One's not contingent on the other. They'll hear this petition separately.
Thank you. All right, having heard all of that, is there a motion on this particular petition?
Madam President, forwarding the recommendation of the Facilities and Grounds Committee, I would move to deny the transfer of said property from the Somerset School District to the Hudson School District.
Motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor of denying this petition of property transfer, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Transfer of property is denied, thank you.
No, they couldn't petition again in the future.
Okay, we are moving on to the consent items on the agenda. If there is someone that would be willing to make the motion, including the dispersment's amount for Director of... for Director of Finance, Tim Erickson?
Madam President, I move to approve the consent items, including that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $1,851,146.86.
Okay, motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. And now I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Sweet for some recognition.
Yes. I have the annual honor and privilege of identifying the retirees. You just acted in the consent item to approve the retirement of seven, seven of our teachers. And I'd really like, I would like to name them and acknowledge that. First, Janet Kleimer. Janet presently is an art teacher at Hudson Prairie Elementary. And this is her 17th year of teaching service to the Hudson School District. And as I go through, I'll give you their present assignment. And please be aware that several of these folks have taught variously across the district over the tenure, over their tenure. The next retiree, Joan Guckenberger. And Joan is reading teacher at North Hudson Elementary. And she's completing her 24th year in the school district. Deborah Smith, fourth-grade teacher, North Hudson, 31 years. Earlier, Deborah was pretty instrumental in the beginning of our Gifted and Talented Program, quite a few years ago now. John Gurness, teacher of math at the middle school, 32 years. Jill Taman, language art teacher at the high school, 36 years in the Hudson School District. Jay Wallen, teacher of math at the middle school, 36 years. And Dan Rasmussen, physical education teacher at Willow River, 41 years. Wow. So you add them all up and we've got 217 years here. But it's quite, it's quite, it's quite a group that we should be proud of and appreciate very much all of their years of service to the Hudson District. They've literally spent most of their careers here.
Thank you, Nancy, for sharing that. All right, and with that, we are moving into committee reports. Dan, in Brian's absence, it looks like you're going to take the Finance Committee meeting report.
Okay, I had some tough shoes to fill there as I'm taking over the chair for the day. The agenda items we had was the maintenance of district-owned vehicles to reduce costs. We had a really good proposal coming from the Safeway Bus Company to also provide vehicle service to, maintenance service to our district-owned vehicles. So it was a very, sort of a no-brainer for us to consider that. The 2010-11 second quarter financials, Tim reviewed those with the committee. We appear to be on target to meet our budget for the year, so financials are looking good. And the middle school addition, we've already heard most of that, so we got an update from Tim. I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan? All right. Learning and Program Development Committee meeting. This group met Monday, January 31st. We had four items on our agenda. The first one was a new, actually a revised policy with some fairly significant modifications that were approved in the consent agenda item regarding student medication. And the modifications are really driven by some new State of Wisconsin laws. Laura Love joined the committee for a discussion about the test that is underway at the high school to use Facebook in certain circumstances to enhance or support either club work or classroom work. The test continues, and we'll get a report on that before the end of the school year. A couple of things that Laura highlighted is that they have used it for, they're planning to use it in one of the marketing classes for a class project on social marketing, which seems aligned with how I see Facebook used. It's also, she's advocating it can be a good tool for clubs and activities to communicate with the people that are part of those clubs. And they're, they continue to look for different ways to make use of the technology in the classroom. As you know, technology is one of our key strategic initiatives in the HSD 2025. So rolling into the next agenda item that we had as a committee was the use of iPads in special education. We have acquired, I think it's 36, yes, 36 iPads for use specifically in classrooms for the students who have cognitive disabilities or communicative disabilities. They're finding that this is a great way for some skill-building. The iPads, I believe, have been acquired, but the classroom instructors who will use them have to go through some training before they will be issued their iPad. And Corey made it clear to us that he has been working with the instructors to make sure that it's a student tool and not necessarily a teacher tool, so. And finally, Sandy walked us through again the process that her team goes through with all of the building principals and the classroom teachers to do curriculum review and what that cycle looks like. That was our agenda, if there are any questions? Okay, Lynn, it looks like you are going to give us a report on the Facilities and Grounds Committee meeting from last night.
Thank you, Madam President. Facilities and Grounds Committee met last night, and all of the items that we discussed were reviewed in either the superintendent's report, request for proposal on our secondary space, the middle school addition update was with Tim. And the only thing that wasn't covered in the report that I wanted to review was the spring work that we have. Everybody was very excited that we were both on time and under budget. And the only thing left is the spring work. We have a second lift of asphalt that will be going in, and, sorry about that. We have some landscaping and the waste enclosure work that is yet to be finished and was included in the budget numbers that were discussed. We also discussed the middle school short-term space for learning plan that Mary reviewed, and then the petitions which we voted on recently.
Any questions for Lynn? No, thank you, Lynn. And finally, Mark, Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Personnel Committee met last night. As you can see, the agenda consisted only of a closed session covering confidential employee data and our annual process of approving the preliminary notice of non-renewals for teachers.
Thank you, Mark. And I assume that there are no additional citizens' requests to speak this evening? So with that, we will, if someone would read the language, we will be adjourning to closed session. We will not be returning to open session. So there's somebody willing to read the language and make that motion?
Madam President, I will. I move that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent B, parent C, parent F, for consideration of preliminary notice of non-renewal teachers, for consideration of employment and performance evaluation data of specific employees, for consideration of personnel histories, disciplinary data or specific personnel problems, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. And E, parent E, for the purpose of delivering about the sale and/or purchase of public properties and negotiating a transportation service contract.
Motion by Mark?
I second.
Second by Pat, roll call vote? Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Van Loon, an aye.
Chairman, aye.
Kaiser, shot, aye.
We are adjourned to closed session.